What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're going to be looking at the hand the story from Danny Danny if they played the boss key special. And took first place. Out of do you know players that was?
I don't I closed the lobby before I thought to check and then I was wondering after the fact.
To give you an idea, it's a eleven dollar tournament and there's almost three K up top, so it's gotta be over two K runners.
Alright. Let's see how it goes.
Right around that. I think there was eighteen K in the prize pool. So about nineteen eighteen hundred.
Okay, so already a weird spot.
Nice four way spot.
Check or bad?
I like checking personally four ways like all of these ranges are going to be condensed around this flop.
I told yeah. If we ever have a hint to bet here, like would you bet any hand ever ace ten potentially?
Nope. Why would you bet it? Only betting value.
Well, like our very best draw that blocks the nuts and.
Exactly. I think it's really viable to bet something where like you're basically pricing yourself in, but you want to be betting like twenty percent. With some kind of like nut flush draw or something. I think that's viable, but it's not necessary.
I'm pure value here when I bet. Forehanded TTO is out, no balance.
You're not, you shouldn't be pure value. You should have a couple of buffs, but.
That's GTO.
Hmm?
That's GTO. We're forehanded here. That's not, we're not playing, we're in next pure exploit territory at this point, right?
I would kind of agree like it's just, I don't know, like it's really hard to balance a range here.
What would you do with ten nine of hearts? You're gonna have no buffs in there?
Ten nine of hearts.
The nuts.
Um, like King ten of hearts.
Yeah, sure.
Just checking, check, I can easily check call.
You can check raise also.
You do that as well depending on how many people want to stick around, I guess.
This is a fold because he bets so large, Louis.
He pots it for him.
Yeah.
Everyone okay with the fold?
Yep, I see that fold.
Okay. Look how big he, look how large he bet. He overbet the pot.
He ain't got no buffs either.
Because I have a hard time folding here. I'll be honest.
Don't feed the fish.
You're kidding me? Four ways? You're gonna call a pot sized bet with ace high?
Uh, yeah. With this one?
I don't know if your ace or king is good if you get it.
Yeah, exactly. We have a bear gutter.
So like when this guy bets, when this guy bets here, like the burden of defense. Like relies on the last pair to act and that's us. Need to defend some, some things there.
But we're gonna check like, we're gonna check like pocket queens, like we have hands.
You can look in wizard that, see what you have to call there. Pair, this is a lot, this is just for bad. This is like a lot of pairs with redrawals, like top pair with a redraw mostly. Two pair sets like it's just all good shit, man.
I mean, if you really want to look at it, you can HR see this spot, but it's um.
And you have the ace of hearts which blocks the like the nut flush draws that they love to like they'll find big bets with sometimes.
Both small blind and big blind can have, I mean, small blind can have all the ten nine suited, big blind can have all the ten nine off. I just didn't wanna. Step in front of a train when this guy's potting it against those guys.
Louis, you only have to defend about twenty percent here. Cause you're looking at the cube root of about fifty.
Yeah, I don't think this spot's that interesting like.
Root of fifty-two percent, so. You don't have to defend twenty percent of your range.
I agree. I think it's straightforward.
So we don't defend any SI, we don't defend the nut backdoor flush draw or the gotcha.
First of all, that's. Front door flush draw, man. Maybe if he bets like three, but.
We're gonna have queens and jacks in our range. We're gonna have. Front door flush draws.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, alright, if everyone agrees, I must be wrong.
And like tons of our, um, tons of our like front door flush draws there have straight draws like we have king nine suited, we have eight ten suited, you know, like we have just.
Cause I will really have a hard time folding here. Maybe I'm a, I'm a.
Alright, give it two seconds. Let me just put the inputs at HR C and we can continue. I'll, I'll, I'll just put it in there.
Flop, how do you put this in a?
Oh, wait, wait. I'm sorry. Never mind. We're, never mind. Uh, sorry. Yeah, we can't look at that spot. I don't know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So the burden of defense is mainly on us. I guess I agree, but how often is he actually potting it here? Where like, what?
Do you want to, do they want to pot? Which, what, which kind of hands? Overpairs? Maybe a?
First of all, he's not.
Guys, guys, if we get caught up on this spot, that's really not that interesting. We're never gonna finish this, so like just. Just click the buttons and move on like it's a fold.
Yeah, honestly, it's only guessing because he shouldn't have any pot sized bets in there anyhow. So wrong guessing it what he might have.
Right, so it's, it's, it's like what Ken said, it's exploit land, so.
Go home and node lock, uh, monk or multiway and figure out what you want to do with it if you want.
Alright, so if I, if it was heads up against him. And he overbats on the flop on queen jacky, you're mixing, you need that heart to continue, I think.
Hmm, there you go.
I get the heads up. Cause we're.
But it's not heads up.
It's not heads up. That's right. So, okay, probably fine to fold.
I think SPR goes to one when we called instead of whatever that was gonna be there like three.
I like defense here.
Hmm.
Yeah, you're just dead.
So like with a hand like that, if you get a blank on the turn, are you ever probing that turn?
I mean, I'm gonna bluff sometimes there. If I think they're particularly weak players and only, and only bet when they hit. Like if I, I have some people marked that way, the board pairs turn, I'm gonna take some stabs with ten high once in a while.
This is a fold.
But multi weights dicey.
This might be a fold, yeah. Um, Galen, probably if I. Don't turn any equity, I'm gonna just shut down there. I, I don't know. Don't I have better stabs? I don't know. Depends what mood I'm in.
Yeah, I know the feels. Uh, that's kind of a big bet, a little concerning. Continue is probably mandatory.
Any raising here or just the call?
Not versus size.
I looked this up. And yeah, that size isn't a thing, but there is supposed to be some raising here, which kind of surprised me.
And that.
There is.
Huge turn bet makes absolutely no sense to me.
Yeah, what Danny's saying though is like verse inappropriate size, you're supposed to have some raising.
Did he just rip turn? What happened?
Yeah, that's just, I don't know what happened. That's just crazy.
I was kind of tempted. I'm like, what the fuck's this guy doing this with?
Jack.
Like you blocked it, not sign is what the fuck he's doing.
Queen ten, I don't know, man. Uh, this is kind of whatever. I think it's fine.
We need to hit.
You wink?
Maybe not. Oh, yeah.
Alright, so now the real game starts. Pocket kings.
Rebuy equity?
They just give it to you.
Uh, I didn't bust because the Jack sky didn't have enough.
Oh, okay. Thirty big blinds. Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna ask the question Joey, how often are you raising here?
Well, we jam or we raise?
I thought I had, if I had less, I would have jammed.
Thirty's probably not too crazy for a jam, I would think.
You're probably right against button.
Seems kind of like a lot, but like you're.
Oh, I had this guy knit tag though. I don't know.
I don't like it.
So multi way, um. It's kind of cusp, right?
No simple interaction, just have a gut shot, it's probably not good.
At least one club, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, but if you got some scams up your sleeve, maybe this is.
This is a kind of interesting.
Again, you're in the small blind, so this is, this doesn't hit your range at all. When the board pairs. So it's a thing from the big line, it's just fair enough, really.
It's not necessarily that the five hits me. It's that it like, it doesn't improve anything that he. Could have been except diamonds, of course, but I can have diamonds too.
You can, uh, look at this.
So pure jam pre flop, by the way, guys. It's like up to AC, up to A seven suited basically. I mean, A two and A three max, but A four, A five, A six, A seven, pure jam.
Yeah, but he said he had a knit tag on this player, so I guess I'm okay with not jamming it.
Then just fold.
So if he's a knit, do you think he's calling off tighter or wider versus jams? And do you think if he's calling off tighter, you should jam more frequently or less frequently?
Uh, he's calling off tighter, but his opening range is tighter too, so.
Yeah, let's fold that.
But it is from the button. Even. Even a knit will open thirty percent from the button.
Hmm. Hey, you should look at the turn strategy just for that spot. I know the big blinds in there, so it's gonna change the dynamic, but.
Just pretend he wasn't.
Yeah, just to see if there's some merit to, uh. Danny's line here. I don't think it's crazy to be honest. Like we don't have a ton of fives. Is there anything kind of like what he was saying?
Uh, it's not gonna have my hand in there pre though.
You ace four suits.
It mixed in GTI wizard poker coaching was a pure jam.
Yeah, and I like GTI wizard range is better.
So when he calls.
Okay, flop call.
Assuming no big blind, the big blind there could change it a little bit, of course.
And then the five of. Diamonds, cause the flush came in too.
The only difference really between the ranges Joey is pre flop open sizes that gives slightly different results.
Another thing here.
Not a thing. I do an offsuit five two just to check.
You know what? From the big blind, I'd believe it.
It probably is a thing from the big blind.
I'd be like, okay, maybe then he has a five. I think the flush hitting and the paired five. Gives you more. To be able to bet at this.
Yeah.
But it's not a thing. So making it an offsuit will make it worse.
Oh.
She's a bit wide.
Spicy open here.
A little bit wide, instantly punished.
Honestly, I like this open.
I think it's good.
I think it's good. I think this is good.
I think I wanted to play pots with moon dancer.
This is a bet, right?
Uh, you got a big, you're gonna bet, I think.
That's the problem. Okay, so like this hand does have some attractive properties to bet, but this type of board needs a big bet, so I'm kind of inclined to play check. At some frequency.
Yeah, I wouldn't always check.
And by big, I guess it's probably half pot multi way.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. When I said big.
Yeah, I think I'd like to check this combo. Okay, so button card if I jack. Thirty big blind versus both blinds. So what I'm looking at, thirty big blind. I jack or low jack?
You just need both the blinds in there really. So small blind, big blind would.
Oh, wait, you just.
Hold on, hold on, small blind, big blind, high jack, yeah.
Then?
You just need a low connected flop.
Eight.
Eight high.
So other. And then.
Connected, uh, two tone, yeah. Connected into tone.
Yeah, eight high connected.
That's pretty good. So eight, six, four, eight, seven, four, eight, seven, six.
Eight, six, four is probably the closest.
Yeah.
Cause then I still have a gutter.
So you want to look at, what hand do we want to look at here? Ace?
Ace of hearts, seven.
Seven, ace, ace of hearts, seven from the hijack. Right, so you are betting, you are betting with the ace of hearts quite a bit. And when I say quite a bit, I mean, it's just like.
Every time?
And yeah.
It's small.
Every time or is that hit? Is the gray check? Uh, gray is not in range.
Uh.
Oh, green will be checking. It's not doing any checking with ace of hearts. Okay. So definitely a bet.
Okay.
You do continue.
I don't know about this call though.
I think you gotta continue.
Do you? Why?
More bad. You have to ace, uh, for the flush out, draw proper.
Well, you're ahead of all of his bluffs right now. You, you have the club which has got bluff equity on the river. And to be honest, you got outs to a straight still.
Uh huh, exactly. It's close.
You wanna bluff the clubs?
I definitely want to bluff this run out.
I'm not.
Get them.
I like it. Cool.
I think you might even be able just to like jam or something, but yeah, this is, this is good. I like this a lot.
I think we're beating most of his bluffs already, so. What are you trying to fold here? Is he think he's folding it?
I guess five, five, six, five, six, four, six.
Eight or a nine.
Eight or a nine?
Eight, yeah, eight are probably folding here.
There's dude, there honestly, there's a ton of hands he's folding. That beat you.
Right. What, what do you think of the size? Well, you said you could go huge. I kind of wanted to, I was like in between trying to rep a flush and trying to rep a ten and then I kind of rep neither. I feel like, I don't know.
I feel like this is fine. I think this or jamming are like the only two viable sizings.
Yeah, I like, I like this size.
Yeah, the more I think about it, the more I like it because you got one of your worst aces, so you can get better ace side of fold as well.
I think the very lowest I would have went with maybe ten.
You can look at this, you can look at a spot like this and just kind of check it. Honestly, like I. I, I think this is like just a slam dunk bluff. Like I would be, this is.
I like, I really like it. I think, I don't think we need.
Well, it just goes, it feels mandatory.
Clubs, it's mandatory to bluff there.
Um, out of position, you probably can just jam this. It's fine. You get called by this guy and lose.
Always the call caller with the pair.
It does happen a lot.
Oh, we got scam here?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Just couldn't get there. Couldn't get there.
Uh, do you jam this?
I mean, you got rebuy equity, might as well just put it in.
Alright.
He had the, he had the tilt factor going for him there. I saw him open. I'm like, I just snapped, put it in.
Well, we're.
Yeah, he's a shitter.
Call. Check. That's a big bet. Uh, I think you might still need to. Man, okay, so I don't know if he should be having big bets on monotone flops like this.
No, it's absurd. Nah, he don't. Well, I think on some textures, it's okay. Like this here, if he has like a. Eight, like you see, he played nine, ten of hearts. I mean, he has it. I think there's some sizing, yeah.
See, I thought the, I thought the only spots that sized up where there were like the high cards were on the board. Seems crazy to me that he's using.
Let's see.
Hope see you later stuck fifty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, and I get, I don't know if that's only in three bet pots or if it applies in single race pot as well.
There is some blue bets plenty.
But yeah, but that, that's also like two point seven five. It's not like four point one is what he did in game.
Yeah.
Yeah, two point seven five is only hit pot.
Yeah, more reasonable.
And then this is the kind of like.
High ones, right? Yeah.
Not really, it's like the middle ones.
What, what do you mean like?
Uh, these are the flush draws in his range.
I was saying high cards, so like.
Flushes. Yeah. So the, the best ones are like betting small, the worst ones that are kind of the like.
You're, you're going, you're, you're going along the, the X axis. I'm talking about the Y axis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Like you, you definitely don't want to be blocking all of the good flushes. So you don't want like ace queen, but. Like ace eight is gonna be better than king eight, which is gonna be better than queen eight and so on.
But. You're. He's supposed to bet big with plenty of single hearts as well. Not half pot. Well, fifty-five percent, yeah. Yeah, but that's not, that's not big, that's medium.
He went four.
I know it's semantics, but.
Too big.
Well, what are you doing versus a half pot bet there? How are you defending and how much EV?
Still folding.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So how much? I, I'm not so convinced you just let a pair go here.
So this guy is just, he just likes to pile this guy apparently.
So give him, no, 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 half pot. No, no, don't look at that point one. Don't, don't look at four point one, look at two point.
I want to continue with, um, with like more straight interactivity and flush.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, dude, like Jack two, that's seven point zero seven right there. And so like, if you look at that at point zero seven and like you make it like, you can make it four point one, it's not really in range. But even versus four point one, I feel like it's gonna be like indifferent continuing. And okay, yeah, it's just. Not really a thing, but I, it's way closer than like.
It's close.
We were just kind of like being dismissal of it. Open. Pile.
Now, just a quick question here. Against a big bet. Would they found the fives? Not even.
Uh, it's hard. Honestly, this range is hard because it's not really balanced. Like hijack is only doing this with what?
Nothing.
Yeah, nothing really.
Yeah, and this guy isn't playing, this guy isn't studied, I don't think. Like he's smashing flops with big bets.
Maybe this is what we should be defending, so.
I would say this is probably in the neighborhood of it.
Danny Hunter.
This person plays on, uh, this person was a, uh, low, lower mid stakes reg on, um, GG for a while. I haven't seen them in a while. Maybe they went to ACR.
So some of these hands I've looked up already, um, supposed to size down more than I did here.
I was gonna say like, I, I like C betting here, but I like a smaller size. I just don't know. This hand class doesn't seem to benefit from that size you took. As much as like a small.
Well, also when the SPR is so low, you do go smaller. Yeah. Like if this, if this was a half pot bet at. Um. Forty or fifty. Then it would size it down to thirty percent. Yeah, he wants to go lower than that, like one big line.
Hmm. I mean, honestly, there's a lot of really natural.
Who you call? Whoa, what happened?
I don't know if, I don't, I don't know about this.
I'm folding.
Alright, fair, fair warning. I was not in the folding mood for this tournament.
What?
Clearly.
You know, chip up or go eat dinner and go to bed.
Well, you did call ace king.
Well, that's like a clear fold. This one is close and also it's just a call.
Well, you see, this is kind of a goofy thing though, like. Two, what percent, what are the range is doing this three size? Like this is why I don't like.
No, but if I bet one point eight and he jams, it's still a call.
That's, that's a better question. So you jam one point eight.
Less jam.
He's not supposed to jam though.
Yeah, he's gonna have way less jams when you bet smaller.
Right, so it, it's hard to look at when you look at jams because he's incorrectly jamming this flop. You'd need to lock this. Like what is he? I'm curious what he shows up with.
Make the bets three because we bet larger than one.
He has a ten.
Okay, so like if he's jamming, okay, I mean, he does jam quite a few. He jams quite a few tins here, to be honest.
It's very ten heavy. What are the bluffs here that turn? Oh, he has jack X as well.
Each jack deuce was bluffing also. So you are fighting the call when you have the over and the club.
You need a club.
Which we have, we have the jacket clubs, right?
I would have folded without the club. I have the nine of clubs, I think.
Nine.
That thing is so thin. I don't understand how you find that call. Wait, it's so thin.
Let's gamble, baby. No gamble, no future. I'll find another thin caller to throughout this thing. So.
No, in general, against it. Against his population though, in general, I think I'd fold.
So.
What are you saying, Tim? You, you, you were getting muffled between all the.
Sorry, I was just like, I don't think this is that crazy short stacked. If he can ever show up here with like seven X, which I think some people might, you know?
Hmm. You know, I'm kind of curious if you drop it down to fifteen big blinds, maybe where the jamming range is a little more robust.
If you have bet smaller and then he jams. It's getting.
We bet small, he does, when we bet small, he doesn't really have very many jams.
Well, that's why I was saying, if you look at fifteen, I think the, the response is way more jam happy.
Oh. Understand, understood.
So like, I, I agree, like there's just not much jams in this range, but if you drop it down now, like some more of these more fringey jams start coming through, like the draws, for instance. So like. I'm just curious if he's got more equity in range becomes, it's still about the same, like it's still like point three, seven. So.
Yeah.
It's good.
Interesting. The nine of clubs is better than the jack of clubs.
You need him to be bluffing jack of clubs, it looks like.
Yeah. Jack three of clubs, and then I win with Jack nine high.
Exactly, exactly.
So a little bit spicy.
I was skeptical to be honest. I'm not gonna lie, but I.
Are you calling here, guy?
You're Jack out, unless you got ten like.
Ah, I don't know, man, like, like, you know, kind of like what Danny said, if it's the end of the day and I've got one or two tables left and.
Oh, my goodness.
I might flick in a call here. I'm not gonna lie.
Table equity, table number of tournaments.
For me, it's like, it's like the, I just often just go off the villain's deep hip as like a indication of just like how wild versus maybe they are and like. Deep hip of thirty or more, like calling.
Yeah, that's fair too. That's fair too.
He's just never bluff when they raise you there.
I'm a hundred percent folding there.
Hardly ever anyway.
I am literally always bluffing when I jam.
I, I like to defend.
The floor?
Probably. I would dunk some, but this time I didn't.
Now that, I don't think this has any dunks because the two's disconnected.
No, it's not. Three, four.
Three, four makes us straight.
That's called.
I felt like. My hand performed fine to just check call. I had my RNG off for this run, by the way. I wasn't using my usual style of rolling.
Okay, majority bet on the flop.
But, uh, yeah, yeah.
Lots of calls, lots of calls. That's a check.
Ah, love leading.
Six high. Pretty typical.
Uh, you gotta, you gotta call.
Yeah.
We make him three point fifteen or four.
Yeah, yeah, three fifteen is good.
Problem is three fifteen is not well represented, but.
Yeah.
I honestly, it, it's probably, it's whatever. It's still got like eight percent of the range betting this size, so.
So on Danny's comment that like he's, you know. Calling wide or whatever and getting it in because he's happy to go eat dinner. In that scenario, I am just jamming this right now.
Oh, my God.
Because these people just love their big bets and he's full of shit most of the time and I just get there.
Honestly, a, a big leak in my database is jamming way too much. Around this stacked up like check jamming. It's, it's, it's really not good.
No, it's not, but if you're looking to go eat dinner, then you know, we can.
Alright, I'm not trying to just pure punt though, come on.
He's got it. He's got a pair. You got a pair.
Honestly, if you're, if you're getting that way during a tournament, you probably.
Hey, whoa, whoa, before, before you go, before you go, Louis.
Wow.
It's a call on the turn.
You gotta call, dude, look at, look at this.
This size is not a thing though.
It's a double barrel.
Okay, so like what kind of hands do you think he's double barreling for this size?
So typical player in this field, I think he's got a pair over a six, but worse than an ace.
That's kind of what I thought too. I thought he just had a nine and ten a lot.
King six or something is reasonable.
Yeah, I, I agree. Like I would not be so quick just to pitch this into the muck.
Well, if you agree, then I'm beat. And I have five outs.
Louis, that's not even the size that he went for. He didn't go half pot, like quartered that.
Wait, I call half. Wait, I call half pot too.
I thought he bet the, oh, yeah.
The thing is, if he went half, he actually has a bluff in range. Like, what is he bluffing anything that size? It feels weird.
Yeah, he should.
The pot is twenty five here, right?
No, that's how much his stacks are.
The pot is twelve.
He value bluffing you.
So this is a third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The pot's twelve. So.
This would be the fifty five percent I see, I see. So it's more like four.
But four is not really in range.
Right.
Honestly, but look at.
How clear call eight.
Zero percent.
Yeah, no, I just went with the one that picks. And against a bigger size, you're still calling.
You're making point two. Point two is like not insignificant.
Yeah. So against this size, I guess this is always a call. And we fold. Yep.
I didn't want to get milked, man. He's just checking back with tens unless I, you know, what I got a spike river and then dunk like, well, I don't even know what the plan is.
Yeah, you can't be all theoried up against a lot of these players.
Then why don't you just jam if that's your read on the turn? If you think he doesn't have an ace there and the ace hits, why not jam if he's?
I, that's actually an interesting idea.
You jab block river when he checks. But you call turn and he gets scared and checks river. You jam and hope he can fall in under bear.
Call is good.
Is it?
You might even be able to jam this. I don't know. I feel like he's a little early position. I call here, though. I like calling here.
Yeah, I'm calling.
Gaming no bueno. Uh, if he checks to me, I'm betting.
Me too.
Small.
Um, made me wanna. I don't know.
Although we don't really get higher cards to fold, so not really sure we have to bet this.
You don't have showdown yet, though.
Yeah.
What, like, are you getting any high combo? Any, all high combos are gonna continue versus a bet here because they all got equity, good equity. So we're not really getting.
We can get one hyper.
Ace five, ace five.
Ace five, exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, but we might be able to get them to fold on a turn.
Pocket threes.
I would mainly bet, but for some reason I checked.
Honestly, you don't, you don't really do a ton of checking in position with like high equity draws and equity like.
Yeah.
I thought the lower the SPR, the more you, it became a thing, or like the lower that you're stacked up. Because you don't want to get blown off them.
Honestly, if you get check raised, I think you even just call probably. You needed to be more connected, Louis, than.
By ten nine nine.
Ten nine nine would be more realistic and you could look at Jack eight.
Yep, or something like that.
All right, but that's, that is an over card. And the paired nine isn't as represented in their opening range. Like I would bet Jack eight on ten nine nine.
Okay, so look at seven, six then.
Okay.
Yeah, but see, my point on this hand is like, we're not getting. A lot of queen X, king X, ace X is full yet. Like that have two overs or like even like uh, you know, an over with a gutter, you know? Like ace eight.
Ace eight doesn't have a gutter.
Seven, six.
If he's got two of the.
Yeah, but they should be, those hands should be folding in a multi-way pot, though.
But I hear in this scenario, the button is betting almost any good card.
There's a touch of checking seven, six here.
Which combos, though?
Yeah, which uh.
This probably is pretty representative.
Twenty percent. So.
I mean, the heuristic is pretty truthful. Like you have hands like pocket fives, like your, your under pairs want to check, so. You have to mix something in that range where it's not just like absolutely naked.
The closest thing to, to our hand there was the seven, eight suited, which mostly bad.
Yes.
Eight, seven suited, Scotty?
Yeah, eight, seven suited is the closest thing to our.
Oh, what's the board?
Nine, nine, ten.
Nine, nine, ten.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we don't beat the bottom pair anymore, but.
There's some checking still, though. Like I said, I would mainly bet. I don't, something made me want to check.
I mean, it's a small bet. I guess you gotta continue. I'm not.
It's so tiny. Yeah, I know. I'm like, I guess for that size.
I think I'm folding.
Me too.
I don't love it, but I mean.
Do it straight when a flush is in.
You don't close the action. You need like a club to continue, no?
Honestly, like I'm indifferent. Like I, I don't think calling one point five is a punt, but I don't love it. I would not fault anybody for folding. Uh, phrase is good. I like.
You have six outs, none of which might be good.
Yeah, that's kind of the point, right?
This guy's gonna stand the plot. Yeah, he's a big, he's a big flop C better, this guy. Love it.
Yeah, I've picked that up by now. I'm like.
I thought you had pocket queens, fuck.
Oh.
All right, so like bottom card pairs and you have a hand that's gonna be struggling to continue versus like a polarized bet on the turn. I think.
This is the spot to do it, right?
However.
This is a good donk, I think.
When he's bet sixty on the flop, how many seven? I mean, in theory land, I'm probably supposed to continue with a lot of sevens still.
Bro, you're not, you're not folding sevens.
So turn fifty fifty. You, this is the spot you were looking at, you, that you did from the small blind with the five. This is the spot to go for it.
Hey, give him a.
And other than the range will uh, will dunk more than this. Like this is not even the best dunking game, I think.
I, I would agree with Tim. Um, I would also, if you look at the flop, give him an over bet on the flop and show how much he's folding seven X.
He's bet.
I wouldn't lead versus this guy uh, as a bluff when the sevens pair because he's a blaster.
So why would you not want to freeze the action?
You really want him to keep blasting while you have second pair?
If I have a seven, I'm saying like that's a spot, I, I might be talking about something different than you guys, I'm not sure. But I like like seven, we get some docks, but I wouldn't dock a seven versus this guy because he's a blaster.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't donk a seven if that's the case, but donk your medium strength hands. Protecting it with the seven, even though you don't have sevens in your true range.
Well, you could always make some sevens in.
Well, sevens is one of the highest frequency boxer and that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree in a, in a balanced strategy, but the exploit Ken saying is this guy is a big bet blaster. So you're gonna, you're gonna extract more EV by letting him blast.
The way I see this, guys, if you look at all the hand plasma, one that checks the most is second pair, no?
You're saying the, the value hand that checks the most, right?
Your kings are leading and your sevens and the queens are checking a lot.
Do you see any like?
King, Jack, King, ten.
And the King ten checks everything. King seven.
Kings, King seven.
So tens and jacks block their bluffs. Nines, tens and jacks block bluffs.
Your ace X is really leveraging the seven, which is pretty funny.
Yeah.
And your low trashy cards are really leveraging it. But yeah, before you go too far, check out the flop real quick. Just give him like an absolutely absurd sizing, like the biggest bet he can do on the flop.
Galen wants to show me I'm in it again.
Yes, that's exactly what I want to do, Danny.
Can go.
What, seven?
Seven, yeah. Give him the seven.
It's just a sliver.
What are we doing? What are we doing with our sevens? All right, we are folding some seven X here.
Quite a bit.
Mainly.
All right, so maybe, maybe the five then.
We're folding, we're folding a ton of queen.
Yeah, there's nothing really in that range and like versus this.
Whoa, who's the knit now?
Yeah. It's still in there, so.
And is there?
I potted it. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to.
Are you turning it into a bluff?
I don't, I, I don't, I don't like this.
Oh, yeah, I lose to a king, right?
Yeah, you do. You lose to his bluffs. Because his bluffs get there on the river with like spades. If he's got ace, jack, if he's got jack nine.
I'm pretty sure in game, I forgot I lose to a king.
Yeah. Um, it would be interesting to play this as a, it'd be interesting to play this as a check jam, though, if you wanted to turn it into a bluff. But I think playing it as a check to show it down and then maybe turning into a bluff would be kind of interesting.
Check jam is like.
I need to go back to hand reading school, board reading school.
Yeah, like you block all the full houses, right, Tim?
Yep, yeah, when he's like, he's like bottom two, two pair kind of type hands are really good for that.
Right, so we take a donk when the seven of what comes, the seven of clubs, offsuit seven.
We didn't dunk though.
Oh, you didn't dunk, so play, so play check. Check, check. All right, so you check again. And the ten of spades. So queen ten is pure checking. So let's say you play check with it.
And then read the board, right?
And then let's give him the primary frequency. So give him some, I guess you'd have to give him ten. And what do you do with queen ten? Not really bluffing it, not really bluffing it. You're, what are you bluffing?
Call it sometimes.
Yeah, you call it sometimes. You're calling, you're bluffing like six deuce, six, three.
They seem to be all speed.
Well, those are flushes, so that's not even a bluff. I don't know what.
Can you exclude spade?
Yeah, you're gonna have to un-isolate spades.
Queen, Jack.
Queen, Jack, it seems to. Yeah, but you're, you're turning into a, well, that's, yeah, you're turning it into a bluff sometimes, but.
Yeah, ten.
Jack ten sometimes.
That ten not because of its ten.
We don't write notes. It says we get the call.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, here's a raise block. I see. So we checked a bet and we're bluffing raising some. I got it.
Yeah, he's just looking at the bluff rate, the bluff raise range on the river.
Yeah, the bluff, the bluff is, the bluff is the Jack ten because it's.
Yeah, this was the hunger showing.
This, this is terrible.
I know, this was, this, if, you know, pretend the other seven was a six and then I'm just going for a thick value.
Thick. Uh, race is good.
I agree with you. It's terrible.
What do you mean? You, you, you had two pair with queen ten.
Exactly.
Is this a bad spot?
I kind of, I kind of, I kind of like betting.
I mean, I gotta really be careful against.
You were ahead of it. You were beating, you were beating ace queen.
Queen high flops, I check a ton when the small lines in the hand. The, the king, some of the queen more.
Any single Broadway card, you gotta be careful against small blind.
You can bet your ace, the ace high flops more the most, I think.
I have better bluffs than this.
I feel like when you open the button, when you open the button. How many queens and tens are they not three betting?
Um, a lot of the suited ones can call.
That's true. What are we, thirty effective or something?
Twenty.
Twenty. Yeah, I don't know, man. I feel like.
Oh.
Twenty. Just put it in chippy V.
Let's assume he's not rejamming properly and is calling more it too. Because that's what these guys tend to do. Well, some of them. The Americans. Did I lag out here? Or is Louis not doing anything? Oh, there we go. Hold on, let me refresh. One sec.
So you don't want to bet. Last row, but you want to bet every back door and the back door flush and the one that missed. I see this. So this would be a bad here.
I would think so.
It's forty effective, by the way, not twenty. I mean, big blind is twenty, but we're discounting him a little bit.
Why?
Well, if we're thinking what the small blind range is, he's not having any of those rejams that we were thinking of at forty.
This is the guy you play against.
Hmm, I disagree. I mean, in terms of SPR, yes, but if we're thinking of ranges, then the small blind doesn't have a twenty big blind range. He has a forty big blind range.
Yeah, but the guy you're most likely to play against is him, huh?
No.
Why not?
Because small blind range is way stronger here, like way, way, way stronger.
So you'll play less often. Do you agree?
No.
Range is smaller percentage, so it's less often. And then range is wider, bigger percentage, more often.
More often what?
That you're gonna play against big blind.
You mean pre-flop before we open, or you mean once we see a flop and these two people have called?
Once we see a flop, big blank connects a lot more than the small line.
No, no, big blind has hands like, his hands like.
It happens more.
Four suited, eight, four suited isn't gonna play it back at us here, is it?
Hang on, you, you're thinking but slightly wrong. Um, who has the higher MDF? Responsibility here.
The big line as well.
Yeah.
Blind. But small blind has no whiffs here.
Range is gonna have to. Anyway, I.
Small blind has no whiffs here except for the pair, pocket pairs.
I mean, he has a little like ace X suited.
And yeah.
It's like the worst he's got. A little, no, he's got a little king, a king X suited as well, but.
All right, he had the whiff.
Yeah, right. But no, you're right.
You're right in this.
Like king, queen, king, jack, Jack ten, ten eight, like he has tons of those kinds of hands that all have pairs or good draws.
I like the overlap.
Is open limping a thing at thirty blinds?
Overlimping?
No, no, overlimping is from the threat is open limping.
No, I, I, it's like I disappeared.
It's a, it's less of a thing when you get that deep, but that was an overlap.
No, no, I, I was good with his limb.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was, I don't think, I don't think, uh, I don't think thirty too much.
Yeah.
King counter. What is this, three?
This is two. No, it is three. You didn't play the first one, that's right.
Oh, this one.
Bet small is good.
Galen has seen this hand.
Yeah, I, I like this too. I think this is good. This, I like the small, small. Okay, I, I'm not gonna comment. I want someone else to comment. I've already given my thoughts on this.
I would. I would have checked the turn. And call, and called one bet on the river.
Uh, he shouldn't have any aces in range, so I'm jamming river.
Wow.
Okay, Ken, okay.
Ken finds it.
Why should he not have any aces?
Because the, what did he start with, like fifteen bags or something? Twenty?
You got ace X at that stacked up post.
Right answer, wrong reason.
Yeah.
What did he start with?
He started with, you definitely have some ace X here. Um, the right answer is because. Um, Danny took a double small line, so. He's got a check rates very high frequency on the flop. If he doesn't check raise on the flop, he's damn sure check raising on the turn when you go double small, so. He arrives on the river with basically zero ace X. Hence, you got the effect of nuts and you should be jamming.
It's just ace nine that he, he can show up with.
Yeah.
That ten is also pretty good for imposition in this kind of scenario. You just size up here. It's not a bad.
Yeah, I think the, the main bet was a little bigger than this one.
It should be a big bet. It's a bet small on the flop, pick up a.
I think it's a, it's a little different when you're twelve effective, though, right? Like, you don't need to. Be like air quotes, big bet when he's only got fumes behind.
Even if he's playing pre-flop correctly, he still doesn't have that many suction range. Most people are just jamming their aces.
But it, uh, yeah, it's soft for fifteen big blinds, not twelve.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Mm hmm.
They're kind of close, I mean.
I think I honestly. I like, I like small, small a lot. Like if you start going too big, you're gonna let him off the hook with like nine X and stuff like that here a lot. Like if he's got Jack eight and you polarize the turn, what's he gonna do? If he's got six, seven.
Do you double barrel small with your range here?
Not my entire range, but this hand is really good for this.
Yeah, well, you get to have a lot of blush get going small, small too. Yeah, well, you get to have a lot of blush get going small, small too, and you put a lot of pressure on all this shit, cause he really does lack a lot of aces, right? Like he, that's his, he's got some, we say, can you wait, can you weight it, his range? Like he's gonna have some, but he really doesn't have many, right? Like.
Yeah, if you look at the weight, okay, like when he arrives here on the river, this is the river, he's got like nothing, nothing.
Cause look at flop though, he, he does have them on flop and he just check raises them like every single time.
Okay, yeah, that's, that would be the node, right? So like. On the flop, he's got reasonable frequencies of ace x here. Like all of his suited ace x are there. He's got these middling trashy ones.
Even the nines, it's a pair of board he shows from the big blind. He's supposed to defend by raising everything.
Mm-hmm, but okay, so like when he doesn't raise. Like the jig is kind of up, like, and he, you have the nuts basically on the turn.
And there's only two combos of ace nine suited available.
Right, so like, uh, we're not really worried about that. And like, if you go too big, he's just not gonna be paying with a hand like this.
Actually, no, he has, he has the nine of clubs too, so, or not, so there's only one combo of ace nine suited left.
Right.
Ace nine of hearts.
Assuming he doesn't have the suited, the offsuit ones, which he doesn't really. Jack tens, what is jack ten FC? What?
Yeah, I think I like a size up on the turn and I'm not sure if I'm value betting the river after I bet small, bet big and I'm gonna get call, call. I don't know if I shove the river. Would you?
Yeah, I would.
I'm always jamming that river.
Uh, part of my thinking here was they are not re-jamming correctly pre, so they'll have more ace x than they should. And they're over slow playing, so they'll have more ace x on the turn than they should. But I think I agree with Galen that they'll typically just jam it in over my small turn, but.
And another thing is your jam on the river is less than pot, so like I'm just trying to get called by worse hands. Like I think if he's gonna call with a ten and nine, then great, you know?
Mm-hmm.
This is like such an under bluff spot though. I thought he would still just like fold a ten.
Hey, Mike.
I, I thought I would have a hard time getting called by worse in this, uh. Runout. But next time I'm gonna triple it off and we'll see what happens.
It'll be an ace. You'll never do it again.
It'll show up with the ace five off.
And you'll never do it again.
Alright. Queen, queen.
Kobe ballin', the blaster on my left now. Oh, alright.
Uh, you can maybe jam this. Twenty-four effective. I mean, that is a little early position to be jamming over. But what, what do we think's jamming here? I think this is not crazy.
Button cut off hundred jack, low jack.
Hmm, I think we saw this in a bunch of our studies. Oh wait, sorry, yeah, it's one not squeezing.
Yeah.
I think it's queen, jack, king, jack. I think the ten jack drops off versus zero your position.
I'm okay with it. It's only low jack though, so.
I think I.
There's definitely some, there's some calls in it. If it does, even it does three bet, it'll mix.
I like ten jack more than I think I like having a, a queen. Personally. Here, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's pure, wow.
So like, if you look at the range now, let's see what the queens are doing. So this is, this is a different one, yeah. Okay, so queens don't really care. It's the, it's the king that's kind of like starting to fall off. King ten's still good enough. King, jack is a no bueno. Queen, jack's good. Queen ten, jack ten, yeah.
King, queen.
King, queen.
Well, I think some of the kings are in there because they match the pocket kings that also go smaller.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, I, I would agree with that, Joey.
Nice little jam.
Finds a jam, gets called, hits it, hits it on the river for sure.
Oh.
Think.
Alright.
Raise. What do you do versus a big blind jam with pocket threes there?
Oh, you gotta call.
I think you call fours and better, right?
I'm folding, like I'm not raised. I have those chips in a game like this. I just, I'm not flipping for twenty some days.
You gotta call.
Alright, put, put your answers in the chat. Put your answers in the chat. What are you doing versus jam?
I'm almost certain it's a call, but I'm folding.
I'd say fours is the bottom.
Oh.
Fifty big.
Folded, Scotty, you're cheating. You saw the answer.
No, 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 no.
No, it's, it's twenty, it's like twenty-five or whatever.
No, I answered, I, 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 I was doing a private, I answered Tim privately with fold, cause I hadn't said it back to. Cause I answered what JTFC was.
Oh, what is this scam?
Oh, I nailed it.
What is this scam?
I, I like fold. Alright, don't look at the answer yet. Don't look at the answer yet. Alright, so fifty effective, you open the button, small blind three bets you. What are you doing with pocket threes?
I'll snap it on.
He's three betting you and you're gonna call. I say, I say we jam. It's a jam.
It's a pure jam. I, I, we looked at, I looked at this a few days ago.
Are you insane? You wanna four bet all in?
Yep, I damn sure do.
I think threes and was deuces doing it too?
I think do, deuces through fives. You didn't look at it. What are you doing?
I think fours and fives, fours and fives do it the least, right?
This is the most interesting.
Backwards.
This is the most interesting of the questions.
No, not the small, the big blind.
Fifty.
No, 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 small blind.
Small blind at fifty.
Big blind still might do it to be honest. I don't know that range. I know this range.
Yeah, threes and sixes. You wanna unblock ace, four, ace, five suited.
And the hand, wasn't it the big blind that three bet us?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, but we already, we're looking at a new.
I asked a different question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
If big blind jammed, then fours was our bottom.
Alright, so next.
Equity warriors have fun fighting for that one big blind per hundred.
Hey, man, do you think they're calling off correctly, Ken? Do you think, uh, the Steven Chidwicks of the world are out there calling off correctly? Do you think the true EV of that play is point one?
Wait, Louis, can you click it up to fifty as well?
It's actually a big one for hundred.
Put it to sixty, put it to sixty, put it to sixty.
Alright, first fifty. Oh, then sixes drop out, but deuces are there. Yeah, threes is like the hand.
You wanna go to seventy, huh? I don't know if it'll do it at seventy. I know it does it at sixty.
I sure hope it doesn't do it at seventy.
Seventy's kinda crazy.
Um. Okay, yeah.
So folding's better than calling, right? Either jam or fold?
I think that's correct, Ken. I think. Cause you got equity realization issues, right? Like, how often are you gonna be able to hold on? Uh, I like calling here.
Calling.
We don't wanna jam this?
Yeah.
It's so, I mostly call unless our people behind me are like loving it's just see flops and if they're just calling too much behind me, I'm isoling. I think king, yeah, king, jack, king ten might be in there to.
Sixteen percent, good. I'm, I'm, I'm jamming here.
I think as you get later position, as you approach the button, it becomes a better. Or maybe not that, maybe it doesn't become a better jam. I think they're just too EP to be jamming this hand over the top.
Just performs well as a call.
The people behind me are splashy. I like to ISO and get heads up, but if they're playing pretty good, then I like to try to stick to the ranges.
This isn't the range we just looked at, because this has the king, queen suited jamming most of the time. Yeah, that's the one. Okay.
If I were hijack, it was pure jamming? Is that what that says?
Uh, yeah.
As they get later position, you're gonna jam more.
No, it's, it's, it's us being in, it's.
Wait, I am hijack. Oh, but he's under the gun one. Yeah, it was us being earlier position, we were jamming more.
I think it's more of a call when you're early, early.
Yeah, because.
King, jack and queen, jack suited.
Yeah, the earlier we are, the more we jam it.
Yeah, cause we have fewer calls the earlier we are.
Right.
Wanna be heads up too, right?
Well, we also wanna think of queen.
Is this a bet small?
I like betting small here.
You sure? Okay.
Yeah, let him check this.
Or what?
Uh, the probe, uh, two broadways, you bet larger. This you can bet small. If there was two broadways, you size up your probe versus EP. But one Broadway, you can bet small.
Check two.
I like betting this size. This is good.
Check or size up?
He doesn't have too much seven, nine.
They look at like five, queen, ten and see if it sizes up on the flop.
Five, queen, ten, two tone?
Whatever it is, yeah.
I feel like the more high cards you put, the more likely you're gonna see.
Make this six, a ten of spades.
Yeah. You're gonna see some.
I think we're gonna have more big bets then.
Two, two point two, and then yeah, three point seven. Yeah.
That's serious.
Nice.
Yeah, cause he doesn't have many, much connection around the five, six.
So we need two high card to bet big when in position.
Versus EP. I think it's because the low cards were so low, they were, he didn't have any connection with them.
I was in the blender here.
Saying the same thing differently.
What? This is.
I think I'm supposed to call, right?
This is easy.
Easy call?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So what did you do with like ace, ace seven? That's a real question.
Hey, can you look at a L Baz EV, what their HUD looks like?
Yeah, give me a second. I have.
Oh yeah, I think his three bet was kinda low.
Only one.
It's only fourteen hands.
It's a small sample.
I might have more sample on it.
Oh, I thought you meant.
Let me check my database real quick.
He's a sixty-four on shar scope, uh, low stakes, six seventy-five, twenty-five hundred.
I feel like this spot is definitely a theory call. But if they're not finding the appropriate jams from the big line, you're probably torching here.
That's not right. Cause they're, they're sobbing it for fourteen big blinds and we got twenty-seven.
I'm not.
Yeah, but. It's ju- it's not a thing, cause I'm, I'm just open jamming.
That's. Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. If fourteen big blinds, you just open jam this.
But we can't get the right call range if we change it, cause.
Look at seventeen.
You might see it at seventeen.
Well, if it calls off at seventeen, then it's definitely a call at fourteen.
Move it over, Louis, can't see.
Uh, I'm still just open jamming at seventeen.
You can kind of guesstimate from the EVs, like look at Hjack off worth four big blinds. Yeah, ace nine suited worth two big blinds. This is gonna be a call.
So the floor is between a seven and a six.
Suited.
I don't know. I timed out because I was in the blender.
Oh, you net. This is an easy.
I, uh, it's like. It's like twenty-five percent field at this point too, so.
Think about the positions, just because of the positions, your hand is strong enough, I think.
I don't know, man. I could take it or leave it. I'm not gonna like.
So tight, these Americans, they're not jamming correctly.
Yeah, these are west coast Americans. They're, they're lagging her.
Oh, we're in the money now. This is in the money.
This is kind of interesting. Um.
Oh, you mean this is on the bubble?
Yeah, I think, like I said, this was, I thought it was twenty-five percent, but it might be even near bubble.
Yeah, on the bubble, I, I think I'm more okay with him folding this.
Fold this one too.
But this is for sure in the money.
I kinda like folding here to be honest.
Fold anyway.
It's a, it's a fold, but this is the same, uh, reason I called jack nine earlier.
You're ready to go to sleep, man? You wanna get some dinner in you?
Is this a fold?
I'm ready to gamble, baby.
Yeah, it's a fold.
How confident are you guys?
It's threes are better. I checked it already. I'm cheating.
I think it's a fold, even if the solver says that it's not.
Wait, what?
What are you talking about, Danny?
Well, alright, you're looking at twenty-five. You're also looking at a, you're looking at a chippy V spot, right?
Yeah.
Should be looking at.
Money.
It's in the money.
Yeah, but if the bubble just broke, the, the risk premium just, just plummeted, right?
It's typically about ten percent.
Right after the bubble breaks? Yeah. I think it's lower than that. It's, it's, it lowers, but it doesn't go back to chippy V. No, because it's really low.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying ten percent of the field remaining.
No, 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 I know what you're saying. I think ten percent is quite a high risk premium.
Yeah, it's probably about three.
Maybe it is.
Louis, solve this at three tables.
Solve this at seventy-five percent field remaining and it's still a fold.
Well, it's less than fifty percent now, cause you're in the money. So fifty percent left or thirty-seven percent, thirty-seven percent would probably be decent. And. How much did we have?
So everyone has twenty.
Oh, wait, yeah, in the money's twelve percent, right? Click big blind.
Hang on. Twenty-two and then what?
And then the other guy being bigger.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. You just need to find big blind twenty-two.
Yeah, sort on the big blind. Makes it easy.
Big blind twenty-three?
Wait, three tables? Of course it's a fold.
Dude, this is, this isn't, this isn't the right range.
Well, now three tables is just inside the money with the small pay jumps.
This isn't the right range.
What range would you like?
You gotta have the guys, you gotta have the guy covering, like the small blind's gotta have more than twenty-three or twenty-two. Otherwise it just doesn't make sense. Like you could do, you could do seventeen, nineteen, maybe, I don't know.
Click on big blind at the top.
Yeah, if you sort on the big blind stack size, it makes it nice and easy.
Then go to twenty-two.
There you go. So you got a twenty and a thirty, twenty, yeah, thirty and a twenty.
Thirty, twenty, that'll work, yeah.
Three, zero, two, zero.
Yeah.
That one, that one works too.
Not raising, yeah, yeah. Fold, fold, fold.
But like final three tables, there will be way more ICM than here, in my opinion.
Why?
Because this is still two hundred fifty runners left.
Yeah, but the ICM is done. At the point where the bubble just broke and you're at small pay jumps.
Yeah, but you're at three tables, you're way closer to the FT. Like you're, you're miles away from the FT here.
Today's your scene.
You got small pay jumps for days and days and days before you get to the FT.
You could look at seventy-five percent of the field and.
Yeah, not, not, not a great call. I thought it was a good call though.
I didn't think it was bad when I made it, but apparently it's a little thin.
You're just behind the hands that he's jamming, like he's jamming a lot of threes, fours, fives and things like that.
Yeah, in many, in many ICM configurations, it's just not in there.
I like non-all-in raising here.
Yeah, you got three betters.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got three bet.
Yeah.
Doesn't this ever find a call?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Is queen off is the one that can, it dominates more.
In fact, if the big blind was shorter, this would be a shove.
My, I was gonna say, if it was thirty or less effective, like if, if everyone had less, then we could, yeah, just shove.
Galen, what were you saying?
No, um, it's a, it's a non-all-in three bet.
No.
It's just.
That's a call.
This is a better call.
Oh, I like a raise.
Worked way too deep to call.
In ICM, it doesn't do the calling as much, okay.
To be, to be honest, we're going at the speed of light and there's like a lot of words coming. I thought we were like under the gun, under the gun one or something. So this is button versus big blind.
Blind.
Honestly, I do a, I do a lot of calling there.
It's worth point two big blinds. It's, um, it's pretty significant.
All in?
The, the kids.
We don't know what range he's looking at though, which is going to affect a lot of things.
I mean, fair.
I don't hate this either. Now I hate it.
Now I hate it.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
What did this guy spaz with?
I don't even know what's going on anymore.
Or did you river a king?
Wait.
I see chips, I see chips flying in the middle. I see chips flying back in front of us. I see cards shifting.
I know, it's hard to follow when you got twenty-two other tables, but.
I'm not playing, I'm not playing today, by the way. I'm giving you my full undivided attention and I have no idea what the hell's going on.
You got twenty big ones, you got pocket kings. What's hard to follow, man?
Did he dunk or did he, I can't tell if he dunked or called a C bet. You're clicking buttons, alright. Can't dunk, we three bet.
We three betting bet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Three betting, that out tiny.
I like to bet. It's pair of board, ace high. I mean, this is good. Gonna do this with your aces, I think.
Do you ever check on this flop? With an ace. There's GTO.
Probably the worst ones.
So yeah, I think if you wanna have a checking range here, it's gonna be based on the suit, so you don't.[1793.42] So, yeah, I think if you wanna have a checking ranger, it's gonna be based on the suit, so you don't.
What even is my, what are my bluffs for that size pre? Is it some like ace five off?
We just want a red pre flop, man.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It actually calls more than. It actually calls more than a three bet small.
And is this chippy V or ICM?
This is chippy V.
Oh, this is chippy V. ICM might change it.
Might.
Yeah.
I like the raise. I think it raises.
Small blind, twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, in fifty percent field, it's a pure raise small.
Yeah, I like the raise. Even if the solver says, what the solver says, I like, I like raising here instead of shoving.
I like.
But now I lose my mind. I'm like, eh.
The ICM ranges, honestly.
You'd like to see the ICM range, Ken.
Preflop, yeah, to see if I'm making a mistake, cuz I would raise here too, but if ICM, it's gonna tell me it's not raising, I gotta straighten that out.
Can anyone tell me at what point on the tournament we are?
And I'm sure ICM will tell you it's raising.
Will we pick fifty or thirty-seven because we're still, this is in the money, but it's very far from, you know, say there's a hundred runners still.
What's the preflop range up to?
Uh, so everyone is.
Oh, you're looking.
Say everyone is twenty. Um, uh, this one is thirty-seven percent. And then we'd be the big blind.
We're small blind.
Oh, we're the small blind.
So just three bets, right?
Yeah.
Nice.
Say we are twenty-four percent.
It changes completely compared to I E V.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
You don't, you don't sling your stack around so much.
Yeah, I like the small.
Three bet small, twenty-five percent of the field, man.
I think part of it is too, like, they gotta be four betting lot, uh, well, too, right? Like, if they're not gonna be four bet bluffing and jamming, like, some stuff. Like, if they're not doing enough for that, jamming might just be better, but.
True. True, true. Well, then we just gotta start, uh, making it five with all sorts of stuff, right?
I'm curious, yeah, yeah.
Low small blind.
Jamming the top of your range, deep in tournaments, basically at twenty-five big blinds, period. Chippy V, it's a mistake. It's not good.
What's their response to a three bet LP? I'm curious how wide they're supposed to four bet cutoff.
When, what arrangement?
This, whatever we're just looked at, we three bet kings, what's their response?
Make it cutoff instead of button. And then give us the clicker.
Oh, the three bet is.
Wow, they're.
Three bet. So, yeah, they're supposed to jam a lot of stuff, like, if they're not fine, and I think a lot of people are gonna find jams with a lot of those suited aces, right?
Do you think the EV comes from small three betting a hand like kings from their four bet jams? Or like when they call queen jack and hit a queen?
Both.
Right, so what do you think's better, if they're jamming more or if they're under jamming?
Well, it's hard to say, cuz they're not gonna always hit the flop when they overcall, so we lose some equity there. I don't know. That's a tough question.
Yeah, we can gla- gloss over my punt there. It's all good.
That was an amazing hand. Glossed over. I missed it.
I'm probably not supposed to bet turn. I don't know. Once I bet, I don't know.
The.
We're gonna see it again.
Whoa, too fast. I bet he jammed and I called it off.
And then what did he show up with? King, Jack suited of spades. Spade draw.
I don't know why he jammed, but.
To be honest, that was extremely lucky that he, uh, that he didn't just stack you there with an ace.
I agree.
But I mean, it's like a twenty big blind hand with kings. There, not much we can do, right?
Joey, what were you gonna say? Does the solver like the turn bet?
Well, in chippy V, the solver does have a a small turn bet for us.
I don't, I don't like this sizing. I wanna go big here.
On Jack then three?
Versus small blind, I don't think we have to get too big.
Why do you wanna go?
Bro, it's ICM. You don't need to go big.
Big blind versus big blind. Oh, I definitely don't like to go big versus big blind.
Yeah, going big is.
That's poor small. I mean, two, it goes two or three and a half.
Yep, but I think in ICM, it goes down a bit, too.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not advocating for like over, overbetting the pot, but like.
It's actually got, it's got five size bets, too.
It's definitely a good, a big bet spot. I, this is, okay, I like this combo, Danny. I think this is good. I think this is the wrong spot for it, though.
I don't like this combo at all.
It's a good combo if you're deeper. Like, if it's forty big blinds and forty big blinds, it's definitely good.
We've been saying it's ICM, right?
Where did my bluffs come from here?
Now, now Louis wants to look at ICM.
Uh.
I really want, he wanted to do chippy V.
Your, your bluffs at twenty big blinds should be definitely blocker heavy, like ace five offsuit, maybe ace ten offsuit stuff?
King, eight suited would be a good one.
King eight?
You guys are, are you guys serious? It's like a suited aces and some, a very few suited kings.
I think you're just jamming some of your suited aces, to be honest.
Shooting kings like king seven, king six, king five, probably more so than king eight, even if he's like, he's still opening eights, right? But no hijack, so I think sevens might be better.
You can look at this. Think you can look at this.
Honestly, I think this is, uh, really weird. Jack eight suited.
I was trying stuff, you know?
Chippy V's not doing it.
Yeah, yeah, but we also said, like, look, your twenty big blinds effective. What was the first thing I said?
If we were deeper.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going on that premise as well, deeper stacked.
That's, that's the, that's the big takeaway here. Like, this is definitely a good combo if you're deeper.
Yeah, I think in ICM.
Is this the same guy that it too with kings? No, I don't know. Go ahead, Joe.
Nah, you almost stacked it.
Yeah, in ICM with this shallow stack, the ace and king blockers are more important.
You can look at the range, like, look where the bluffs are coming from. I guarantee it's gonna be like your offsuit aces all at mixed frequencies and, I don't know, maybe king, king jacker.
You wanna bluff offsuit ace into a twenty big blind stack?
Where else are you getting your bluffs from that are not all in?
Well, no, we're not saying offsuit.
Well, Galen was.
Yellen is exactly saying he wants to bluff offsuit aces.
There's no, okay, this one is close. Let me look at this one.
I just don't understand what's going on here.
Ace nine off is a little bit there. King ten suited, ace four suited.
So what are those?
So weird. Why are they raising so big?
Well, this one would be chippy V, uh, at twenty big line effective.
Yeah, well, let's look at ICM, cuz it, it changes the range a decent amount. It shifts more towards blockers in ICM.
That's kinda.
Sure, but in my mind, if it's folding at ICM, it's, it's been folding at chippy V, it's for sure.
I was just curious how wide the king suit, the.
Before you change that lane, okay, never mind.
Go ahead.
Put it to like forty, put it like forty or six.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take a deep breath.
Just click on Danny's cuz he.
All right. If you put it to like forty or sixty. Yeah, I don't know what's going on with this.
This is final table.
You were looking at a twenty big blind chippy V scenario. So look at the forty.
No. Galen's losing.
A lot of suited aces and some suited kings. But the king ten suited's the bottom.
Thanks, Joe. This is chippy V, yeah. ICM's gonna change.
Now, Danny, Danny ran it in ICM and posted it in there.
It's not a thing at forty big blinds. Can we move on?
Look at queen eight. Look at nine eight. Look at ten eight. Look at king eight. It's definitely, it's definitely pulling from the eights.
At chippy V from, uh, or like, uh, this.
Jack nine, like, it's not crazy. It's definitely. Look at fifty then. Look at sixty. It's definitely gonna pull from this region at some frequency. And I mean, the jack may be specifically not good here, but if you look at button, it may pick the jack more.
I got no idea why you're trying to justify this.
Dude, am I crazy? Like, did we just not look at a range where it's pulling from almost every suited ace?
I wanna pressure. I think he's opening a lot and folding a lot to raises, so I'm gonna try to raise.
Right.
And then if I get called, it's like not the worst hand to have.
Right.
I can't.
All on this flop, I think.
I might bet a touch larger.
Ah, I like this. Check back.
I don't know. I think his range will be fairly inelastic, but then, I mean, look at the fucking horseshit he shows up with here.
Do we, do we look at his, uh, do we look at the ICM scenario? Like, what's that arrangement look like?
Well, no, because.
I linked one of them in chat, Galen. It actually wants me to three bet bigger and with more reasonable holdings.
Yeah, I thought the the three bet to four point five was small, but I, but maybe that's a tournament.
So we're not like pulling from, like, where are the bluffs coming from? Like, our three bet bluffs?
Suited aces, um, king jack and king ten suited.
Okay, what is it pulling from on the offsuit side?
Ace nine.
Okay.
I can't look at your length because I don't have premium.
Or Mr. Louis could pull it up.
I see quite a few offsuit a six in here.
Yeah, but there's a, like, ace jack knows the bu- the value.
Yeah, ace five's a little crazy. You're right. Ace nine, though, not so crazy. Ace eight.
Honestly, I can't, like, you're trying to justify this three bet here, and you're, we were talking about this here. You're so out of line here.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to justify this three bet. Like, if you wanna listen to the recording again, the first thing I said to Danny was, I don't think this is the right stack depth for this type of three bet.
Yeah, even deeper, it was not.
So it, so it didn't pull from your suited eights at all?
You had to go to fifty to find a jack eight.
So what would you consider deeper?
And then you said like offsuit days, why, why are we putting so much time in this end?
Because it's interesting, cuz he, hey, man, you're driving the ship. You do what you want.
I was too wide with my suited kings. I wanted to see that.
I just think it's out of line, no, no matter how you put it, deeper ICM, no matter what, this is just not good. Why are we talking so much about it? Think it's good at some stack depth on some, I don't know why, but sure. My question for you guys, is this a double barrel?
I think I would.
Realize.
I wish I double barreled.
We pick up equity.
Yeah, I would double barrel this. We don't have showdown.
The hand he showed up with, I thought, would fold flop. So I wasn't sure what I would, what called flop and would fold term.
No, I think when a paired board with paired aces, I think fives are a call pre on the flop.
I thought he should have folded every street.
We only bet the one.
Pre flop.
And you only bet ten percent. That's why I said I would have bet the flop at like maybe thirty percent. And then I would have double barrel the flush.
And he made it really attractive for him to call preflop because your, your raise was to only four point five.
If only I just had the nuts.
That's always good.
Hmm, I think this one is a mistake. It's too wide.
Yeah.
You don't have any blockers here.
This does this deeper, though, or like, uh, in chippy V. I don't know. There's some scenario where this is a thing at forty, maybe.
Yeah, there it, there is, but like we already discussed with the other one, but you're having, you have the same knowledge with this hand that you had the other, other hand at that time. You need like ace or king blockers pretty much to.
Is this too wide of an open at this stage?
Well, they have offsuit, offsuit eight.
I don't know. This, this one's close in ICM.
It's cusp-y, whatever.
It limps it sometimes. But I don't think you'll limp in ICM.
True, though. It's a good spot for it, cuz it's one line short.
May find one.
Oh, yeah, mixing a lot, probably not an open with the, you add like ICM.
Yeah, it's, the bottom is Jack nine and it, it's point oh one EV. And the deeper we get, I like to skip a lot of the, if the open is like point oh one, is there even a point?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Um, oh, on that, I think it depends on who the, who's in the blind, big blind.
If you have, if, if they're gonna be three betting you often, then maybe, yeah, you could drop the point oh ones out.
What happened here? Oh, he min-clicked me.
He min-clicked you and now he leaves.
Wait, he min-clicked preflop?
Yeah, yeah.
One more.
And you didn't fold?
You can't.
Mid three.
You can't.
Literally mid.
Yeah.
Don't tell me that I can't.
From two to three.
He rates two and he.
What do you think they do that nonsense with? I mean, sometimes they show up.
I don't know.
Sometimes they show up bullshit, but it's often, everything's usually better than jack eight.
So you're.
Yeah, but you're getting five to one.
You gotta put one chip in.
And now you gotta put more in. Well, that's.
You got me there.
So you guys think this is a call? I mean, it's a low kind of.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't, not, I don't think with your stack.
Intentions here.
I don't think we call this type of draw at this night, that.
Yeah.
Nah.
Uh, we don't have an over. Maybe if you had an over.
I thought he would give up turn a lot and I could take it away.
He's not giving up aces.
Yeah, I'm not sure about your flop call. King eight seems fine.
I like that.
Yeah, I'm totally on board with calling the preflop cuz that was, you just gotta call one to win seven.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Uh, two jam?
And then you hit top pair, you hit a jack, he puts the chips in, he shows you a fucking pocket, pocket kings, that's what they do.
Sixes is like my, the very bottom. Um. But apparently it's bad.
Maybe it's fine.
Are you supposed to call the sixes? Are you supposed to fold them?
Oh, no, wait, it's fine.
Yeah.
And it is about, well, fives is zero EV, but.
With, with, with two threes and fours, you just fold?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's good.
That's very good. Back in business.
Here we go with the small three bet.
It's good, just rip turn, right?
Yeah, and hope he didn't trap me. I don't know what he's doing this with. It's so weird.
Guy's a fish, dude. He clicked you already once, like, he's obviously.
That's what I was thinking too. Like, if he had aces, he would have just put it in, surely.
Is this ever.
Would have clicked you.
Why is this a good size?
Yeah, it's fine. Jam turn. Pot's gonna be twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay.
In GTO.
He used his whole time bank and fold.
Wait, wait, what did he do with aces there? Oh, he opened.
A jam?
Wait, wait, he opened four point five? Wait, wait, he opened four point five? Oh, he opened jam.
He jammed.
Surprise he didn't win.
We won the side pot. Oh, I fucked this hand up. It's just too big.
Is it? I don't know. On that four. Not, yeah. That board you go a little smaller.
Yeah, SPR is really low, right? I mean, you probably do wanna bet half pot.
No, it's about small.
Is it?
I think in a three bet pot, you go huge here, and I got confused.
If it was like Jack, Queen, seven, then you go large.
So half pot was mergey. It used a little bit. Small or some.
Yeah, just arrange that small here.
This is fun, this is funny.
This is good.
Yeah, this is good. And then I thought this like literally nails all of his limp calls.
It does, but I think I still bet with a queen. I just bet small.
I don't have a spade.
Doesn't matter.
I don't know. My plan was to bet some turns if he checked twice.
I honestly don't know what you deal is here, but I would bet a lot with the queen.
Think you wanna spade to bet.
Yeah, I'm perfectly okay checking this behind.
You can get value from where spade draws.
Where you think they flap?
Fifty fifty on a flop.
Fifty fifty. And then if you have a spade.
What do you have? Queen, three?
Why is it not in range?
Cuz we're not on the right note. Queen three. With the spade, mostly betting. Even the three of spade, and then the other ones are betting less. So you could bet. But you really wanna spade.
Or the Queen of Hearts. The Queen of Hearts did a lot of betting.
Nah, I'm just checking down, I guess.
Now my plan is to bluff some rivers and then I got there. Spike the all three.
Okay, open for big blind.
I rejam.
No, I, I would, I would have isolated.
Woo, look at this now.
Nice call.
Snap it off.
Hit an ace.
Hit the ace.
Win the side again.
My pot is big.
Yeah, side pot's bigger than main pot.
See there, I would have just called.
Yeah, something that JL said is when the. Shove is for like five big blinds or less, you can min click it to isolate him.
Yeah, but the two stacks behind me were like twelve bigs each, so if I'm in click, I'm committing versus them anyway.
Yeah, that's why I just, well, he, he jammed a little bit bigger, so you could just call and then hopefully they rejam behind you.
With the jacks, yeah.
Yeah.
That's fair. Do I, I don't really, I don't know if I wanna induce a rejam behind you with jacks.
I do, hundred percent.
It's like flipping or, yeah, but ace queen, they'll rejam some worse aces probably, right?
Well, anything that's not a pair, anything that's not queens, kings or aces is worse than jacks.
Yeah, but you don't dominate it.
Are they really putting in nines, though?
I think some people will.
Yeah, but.
I think it's just gonna be like ace, king a lot. Well, they won't fold that anyway. I don't know.
But I mean, the point you made was good. The ace queen can be against worse aces. The Jack, Jack doesn't have that feature.
Oh, yeah, so this one, I, I thought this one was super close. I would have, I think this was the bottom of what I would call.
This is the bottom, definitely.
Nice. Maybe could skip it.
With ICM, yes, skip it.
If he has any ace, then I'm like ahead of half of them, behind half of them, right?
Yeah, but he should, how much do you shove?
Seven.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if he has any ace, but I think.
Ooh.
Got a pair draw.
Yeah, unfolding. You also have, you also do have a straight draw.
I think this is a call, but I'm wondering. This is even a bet at this like that, just maybe an interesting hand, cuz.
This appendix dude I played before, he's pretty good. At your table, that's one name.
I said he's Russian.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think he's Russian. He's really good, actually, pretty good.
Gotta get sticky against the Russians.
Okay, betting and then calling the raise is fine, that's good. Then on the turn, you're supposed to be calling or jamming.
Wow.
Always, we're always supposed to call that.
Pretty savage, right? Never fold.
In, in Chippy V land, we are. I don't know how ICM affects post flop.
Yeah, no one really knows.
This guy's capable, so you wanna stick closer to the uh GTO versus him for sure.
Yeah, but what's GTO with ICM?
I don't know.
Alright, so the river is really interesting when he plays check here.
The turn, why do you call the turn?
Got a pair draw and a gutter.
Yeah, I think you got a.
I know, but I don't understand it.
He has all his eight X, he has worse flush draws, he has like.
Wait, what happened on the flop? You opened?
Check raise.
A check raise flop, okay.
And you never, and, and, and in Chippy V, which is what we're looking at, you never fold.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That raise, and on the turn, you never fold.
I guess we kinda have to go back to the flop to see how valuable the call is. It's pretty valuable. One point one, that's like.
Like, if there's one player I wouldn't ever fall against at the table, it's this guy that I know, like, he's definitely, he's definitely in there getting after it and doing what he's supposed to be doing. So I don't hate calling against him.
Okay.
Now it's like.
Back on the, on the river, never bluffing.
So hold on, he, did he check raise? And he, did he check turn?
Check raise, bet turn small.
Oh, he bet turn too.
A third.
I'm not bluffing with that. Like, if I had one club, I could consider bluffing, bluff jamming here, but I'm not, like, he's only got a twelve twelve, too. I'm done.
My problem with jamming is what king do I have? Like, I have, I'm saying I have a ten, I guess, and then.
Yeah, I'm giving up, dude.
Give up and win. I beat the bluffs.
Yeah, and he's capable. Like I said, he's, he's, he's in there battling.
This was a funny hand.
Why would he barrel turn with this hand?
You still gotta gutter. And the three is good for him to keep barreling on. If it was a high card, he could start giving up, right?
I think.
It was like a, well, a king, for instance, or an ace, he would give up.
I think he needs a club in his hand to follow this line, and when he has a club, he needs to go for it on the river.
I think it's an exploit. He probably thinks people o- underfold to the flop check raise and overfold to the turn barrel when they don't improve.
I think.
I could have like ace king on the flop.
I think he's gotta keep on that three, honestly.
Now he's sick of you.
Yeah. Could maybe limp there. I don't know. The, the Jack nine, I mean.
So I just fold. This is probably call and should be there or whatever in theory, but I.
No way in ICM.
It's the bottom of my range, even if it's a call, so. Against these, most of these players, I just like to fold that shit.
Oh.
Ooh.
Final three tables here, maybe? Cuz I wanna play and I, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know the limping ranges here. Like, I, I would find limbs if one of the blinds was like ten bigs or twelve bigs or whatever and shorter. I think I find some lips and I have some limp traps, but we're all kind of twenty big here, twenty effective, it's probably. I don't know, I don't know a limping range here, like, I don't know.
Did you piss him off too much, Louis?
I did.
Louis definitely killed it on.
Yeah. Poker coaching doesn't have a limping range here at all on the button.
ICM charts?
Alan special.
I think, I'm, no, I don't have a poker coaching ICM chart. I didn't know that there was one.
Yeah, they have ICM charts now.
Oh, okay.
Some, so to some extent.
Just like keeping SPR a little higher, um. Keeping their ranges.
Kind of lucked on GTA Wizard. GTA Wizard has limping ranges.
I can look at three table really quick and let you know.
I'm just curious, cuz I like to think about it, at least, cuz I do wanna try to incorporate it more and more. I do a little bit of it. But I'm still not really in tune with it.
I don't see a limp here in this configuration.
So put in like a ten or twelve big blind stack in either one of the blinds, see if you have lips. Like, am I, I feel like. If the small blind is uh short, shorter than the other two, you can start lifting. That's how I do it.
In ICM, though, I haven't seen any limp ranges at all yet.
Yeah, I don't see any. I just checked three different uh stack configurations and, yeah, it's weird. Maybe from earlier. But no, it's, yeah, I don't.
A Chippy V, but not.
What's the?
I guess you just benefit so much from them potentially folding to your open that you don't wanna be limping.
Yeah.
And what's the, what's the justification with that hand to bet into, to bet that flop into two people? Just that they checked it?
It's a bad board, you're on the button.
They miss a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there one spade?
No, but it's a bad board, it's fine.
Take my, take my shot at it, try to win.
Okay.
Got him.
Alright, I gotta jump out early. I gotta start working.
So I think we have some open reps with some high-low suited stuff. I don't, I think this probably doesn't, but I wonder if like King four does.
I wonder.
I feel like King four suited could jam here. I think this probably does.
Limb jamming here, no?
No, no, uh, no.
Open jam.
Okay, well, it's limp falling.
Can you pull up the whole range? I just wanna see what it works, like, King four, King three does. And is, is this ICM or Chippy V?
Like, I'm looking at ICM three tables and all the suited kings are. Except King five has a sliver of open jam, Queen six and Queen five suited are open jamming.
Okay.
Jack seven, Jack eight.
Why are we in the low jack?
King high is too good.
We're in the small blind, Louis?
Yeah?
Earth to Louis. He's trying to smooth things over. And then, um, against his ISO. Um, I actually get to limp jam the King three suited as like pure ace three, ace two suited. And then a sliver of the.
Yeah, but I see Emmy saying it comes to play, King three, so I think.
Yeah. I didn't know what to make of this two X. Oh, I folded, Jesus.
Yeah.
I think I have to call.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I was like so confused by the bet size that I just folded somehow. I don't know what happened there.
I, I open jam this, honestly.
We are.
From the low jack, I just rip.
I think ripping is certainly viable. It's probably a mix.
A bit later position like two X, but uh, like low jack for me is a jam.
Get called. Come on, King, Jack.
I'm thinking here, you wanna size up a little bit when the Jack comes, no?
He doesn't need to.
I strongly considered checking back with the nut nut rainbow. Um, and I think the solver likes betting three, probably.
John three.
Oh, well, in Chippy V, yeah. I don't know, we could look at a Queen nine suited, see what it does. Although it's a little different. Or ace queen suited probably is in there as a min raise.
I've got much open.
Oh, the, the problem is that, that the solver just open jammed this pre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You find out all your position, you can be, you, you can start jamming your better aces, later position, you two X and more.
Um, and final two table, it's pretty much a pure min raise.
Ace queen suited.
It's like fifteen percent, twenty percent open jam, fifteen percent.
From low jack?
Yeah.
Would you say final table?
Final two, which that's what this is.
You, you had the, the right sizing on the turn.
Oh, cool.
Going small again.
Even smaller or?
No, no, three.
Alright.
Much it.
Yeah. Smaller jam.
Jam.
All in, sweet.
Yeah, I think so too. Although it probably does like small.
Jacks hate flops.
I bet it mixes.
Final two table? What is this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Final two.
This is where the sun running comes in?
Uh, not yet.
Is this the final one?
Must be.
I, uh, uh, uh. What's going on here? No, it's still final two. What happened? Did we change?
Yeah.
Is this a nine max or an eight max? It's eight max, right?
Eight max, yeah. This is not FT for sure. Oh, this guy called me wide here. So keep this guy's name in your head, coffee nicotine. I probably doubled through this guy about eight times. As amazing as that sounds.
Is this a call or a jam? On this, I probably just a call.
Cut off hijack, low jack, we're big blind, I'm ripping it.
Uh, I don't know, you're pretty deep in this tournament.
Yeah, I think I checked it and it's.
I think I'm jamming like ace ten, ace jack, ace queen off, and then I'm gonna call with some of my suited aces.
Where's the donk?
Where's the donk?
This hand's too good.
Yeah, where's the donk? I don't know. Am I really defending that low portion as heavily in, in?
But you're not dunking this hand.
Well, you dunk with. Yeah, it's gonna do with all your hands in your range at some frequency, but.
That's too good.
This is Chippy V. If we look at my preflop range.
Hey, 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 hey.
It's gonna be deficient in all that shit. Look at, look at all that shit. Like, I don't have that shit, dude.
Right.
What do you mean?
I don't have Queen six off. I don't have Jack six off. I don't have eight four suited. I, like, I don't have any of that shit.
You have a suited box?
Nah, not eight four. Not nine four.
We still have the connected stuff, like the uh, you know, seven, five. We still have the connected stuff like the, uh, you know, seven, five, seven, four, right? But, but you are missing a lot of, you're missing a lot of the six X, a lot of the five X, high, low.
He makes it easy. All in, I say, alright, you win. Alright, here we go. Coffee nicotine, number two.
He just opened rips. Oh, it's only.
Yeah, yeah. This guy, so for context, he's Brazilian and he's been very, very aggressive.
Is this a good call?
Oh, yeah.
Do you see there's a four here?
This is, this is final two tables, Louis. Final two tables.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta call this.
It's not the FT.
There's nowhere around it.
You gotta get chips for the FT.
Okay. Oh.
Ah, it's way out of line.
Yeah, I mean, this guy is just. He's going for it. We'll, we'll say that.
He has all those chips. Like he doesn't even need to just pick up blinds and hand his hair. Like he's already got.
You really wanna call this guy? You don't wanna start raising. Smooth call him down. Oh my goodness, you're in the box now.
Alright, Louis. Where's Louis when you need him?
So hold on a second. Did he go? What was the line?
Best small, best small, all in.
Yeah, I'm calling this asshole.
Geez.
The queen is so bad. The queen is just so, so bad.
What queen does he have? Go and bet that bet.
Oh, he puts you in the box here.
I'm super boxed up.
Yeah.
He can even value bet an eight here.
He's got no fucking queens.
Can. Okay, this is where you put in the final table bubble.
Did you just see him open jam seven? The hand, he opened jam seven, four, or seven, four suited for twelve big blinds. I ain't folding to this guy.
He could have a deuce here for all I know.
He could.
He could have a deuce. He could have an eight. He could have a queen. He could have bucket tens or. So you can't call with a seven.
Bucket tens, really? You think, you think he's gonna still buy the seven like this and eight like this?
The maniacs have a hand sometimes, right?
Yeah, sometimes he's gonna have something. I'm not saying it's gonna be a, very often, you know?
Ah, yeah, but I was super boxed up there. I, uh, I was like, please check the river.
And he does this.
Alright, number three.
I.
Go back.
Hmm?
Yeah.
Did we lose?
No.
Nine big blinds. And then man, we have eight.
Oh, and you got this guy on your right now. That's pretty sweet. What happened? All your chips?
Uh, this is final table now. I mean, you can turn off the filter and see. I think I just folded a lot cause it's final table. Like, I got. I, I had no hands and.
This is the final table?
This is the final table. So look, we're already. How many left? Seven left? So one person has been knocked out. I folded a little more on the FT bubble. I folded some on the FT.
Yeah, blinds went up obviously too, probably so.
Are you sure we didn't skip? Is this really the, my first VP since then? Alright, I guess so. I was the king of folding. I, I play final tables for the ladders primarily. I really like to not punt off when I have easy ladder spots. That being said. There's a guy with one up there. What the hell do we do in this spot if it folds to us?
Fold.
I still do wanna win the tournament, but.
Only problem is if Tucker's, here's the thing. If Tucker's any good, he could just rebound you so wide and you gotta fold probably.
Well, I have eight bigs. I'm not gonna open raise. I'm gonna jam.
I mean, jamming's probably not terrible.
Jam and pray.
Yep.
Alright, now the one guy's gone.
Good.
I think this is a pip out of line. I checked it after.
Yeah. Oh.
Alright. Oh, no, you gotta, alright, so.
This is a pip out of line? You're not gonna, you're not jamming from the hijack? With king nine suited?
Well, alright, I couldn't find the, a configuration that exactly mapped to this. I think given that there's like four equal stacks here and two are in the blind, this is probably pretty fine.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you have, you have so little, you, you have no ICM pressure. You're the small blind. You. You're, you're a small.
Yeah, but we're.
Pressure, I still like it.
It's like a folding war type spot, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't care. I'm going for it. Um.
I don't know if this is good, really. Is it a bit wide? I think so.
It's a pip wide, well, potentially. I, like I said, I couldn't find the exact configuration afterward.
Okay, well, this is easy.
I could have ran all these in HR, see if I had them ahead of time, but it's too late now.
Well, we can look at final table.
I'd be really interested in this one with this exact configuration.
Yeah. It doesn't have it right, Louis, with the, like, the big stack and then like four shorties. It just doesn't exist. Uh, you gotta go six left. Was it one, two, three?
Six left, average stack. It sounds like forty and then what's he got? Like forty, it's eighty. So average stacks, like what? Twelve or thirteen with one big stack?
No, it's around twenty still. Average stack has been hovering around like twenty-two this entire time. You just won't find the one with like ten, 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 which is kinda what we need.
Scroll down a, a lower average stack and see if anything's in there. Did you look?
I'll look while you're looking too.
There's fifty, ten. Hold on. Fifty, ten, go down. Down, down. Fifty, ten, thirteen, eighteen, twenty. Is that close? Nine. So you got like three stacks that are pretty close at least.
Yeah, I think this is the one I looked at.
Probably this one.
Uh, they're all deep.
Okay, I found one.
There's two short stacks. And two big stacks. Three big stacks.
Yeah, so I mean, there's three big stacks. The other one, there was like four milling stack, four like.
Wait, I put one in chat. It looks like it's okay. Zero EV jam. It's like. It's pretty close.
Yeah, I'm jamming that.
It doesn't show big blind there for some reason. But big blind is a twelve, twelve stack in that one.
Okay. You don't know? Bottom of the range.
Alright, so. Five-handed, coffee nicotine, and there was a guy to my left who had like thirty bigs. They, they both had. Uh.
Ten, ten.
Yeah, 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 but the, the guy on my left doubled to like twenty-five and then he got kings into aces. I was like folding my three bigs, looking for an okay jam spot, and I got a magical ladder that right hand, one hand before this, it was aces versus kings and.
Came back and won this.
Stacked the guy.
King seven now. It's a bit loose, no?
Not really. King high, I'm gonna cut off. I think it's fine.
Is it fine?
I think so. Three and a half bigs.
He's about to get, he's about to get, it's, he's about to get blinded out on the next hit. So, yeah.
How do I save this one? Look at what he flopped here.
Big slip. But you were rocking the seven, blocking the diamonds.
Well, he didn't need a seven.
No, but runner, runner diamonds would have been.
Gotta call this guy. He's in here with five, three, oh.
I don't think this is a call. Is it?
I think it's an easy call. Eight bigs.
Yeah, I'm calling.
Jack ten. Clear short stack.
Alright, I mean, what do you do with jack nine? Jack nine might start getting close.
Jack nine.
Nine off.
Two overs today, the guy.
Ah, I think I'm jamming here.
Yeah, I think so too.
Um, I had a reason for this. I wanted to induce actually the, the ten never, I think.
Oh, this isn't strong enough to.
Loose with another part of the range.
Yeah, it's not strong enough to induce.
And, uh, if, if ZB Tucker did something, I would have folded. Alright, this is a mistake too.
What do you?
I'm actually.
Call or?
Yeah.
I would click it, no?
Uh, I like to jam. You protect your jamming range with some strong hands, and this guy's wild, so he could call you off like.
Make it six and a half. What is he gonna do?
I don't know if I get clicks when. Like the, the configuration with the, like, uh, what am I trying to say? I don't know. I, I didn't sleep enough to have coherent thoughts right now. In game, I was like, I'm probably supposed to just call here. And I really just don't want to because it's gonna get hairy sometimes and I don't have the brain power for that, so I'm all in.
Especially when he's opening like everything, like he's gonna have way more king high that he's opening for that size, way more eight, like. He, he's just gonna have a lot of stuff that could just out flop you. Like, he's opening king two, oh, probably, right? Like. I wanna jam and let him try to call off too wide.
Okay. That's a click.
Well, let's see his open raise range.
I have forty bigs in this one. That's not right.
Huh?
You gave me forty big blinds.
Four players left.
Oh, this is the one I meant.
It's more like.
But let me.
It's already calling this arrangement.
Let me see small blinds open range. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I just don't really get clicks here when. I don't know.
Oh, so he's open raising everything he's supposed to be. Okay.
He should just ship it on me. He's tired of running into it. He wizened up.
Yeah.
Here's, here's the sun running portion, by the way.
Oh, Jesus.
I think that also can open small. Alright, I'm here to win. Let's go. We win another flip. He flops the world. Alright, pressure, pressure.
So here we go from eighteen. To chip leader. So this is the hand.
That one changed it all, yeah.
But it's a pretty big jam, no?
Yeah.
Is at this point, you're ahead of this guy? Is this a good call?
I'm ahead, but barely, right? I thought this was a great spot to, to take, to try. If I wanna win, I thought this was a great.
I mean, based on what this guy's been jamming, I just probably like gotta be in there.
With this guy?
We, we've seen this guy just open jamming so much stuff.
We're still ahead of him.
Yeah. It's gotta be by, I think ace nine's probably bottom.
You wanna run it real quick without any modifications?
Send me the brawl hand history.
Sounds like a no.
I'll do it. You asked, I'll do it. You doing all this? How can I say no, dude?
Alright.
Twenty. I'm gonna find it. Gimme a sec. Surely I can find one with twenty and nineteen or twenty and fifteen.
So let's see what we have here. How many got paid in this?
Ten percent?
No, how many people got paid? Two hundred?
Two hundred fifty, yeah.
So I got fifty, that's a PK. Let me see what I got here.
Yeah, about two hundred, yeah.
Seventeen.
Amy's structure again, which is.
So here, no, I got one. Two hundred and thirty-four paid.
Perfect.
And where's the hand history?
In the chat? Do you want it on this?
No, I'll find it. Let's see. I'll say it.
Okay. Well.
I put a similar one. Where, um. Where the small blind isn't even as big stack. So it's probably jamming not even as wide.
I sent it on Discord, Nick.
Yeah, I got it.
It just prints like.
Why does it say four, uh, three?
I have all three players.
And he just opened jammed, right? So there's nothing I really have to do. Next, next.
Very similar, right?
Oh, just let me go change these to two axes.
You wanna switch over to Ken's screen so we can. See the solution and also see what he's doing.
No one trusts me. He has to see, check up to make sure I'm setting it up right.
Yep.
I trust you, Ken. What do you think?
No one trusts me.
I'm just trying to improve our YouTube content.
Don't wor, don't worry, Ken. If it comes down to that, no one trusts me either.
Copy, copy paste. I can't screw it up. Uh.
Yet you're still not showing it, are you?
Uh.
Let's go, Scotty. Let's make sure he does it, everything right. Oh, he's, yeah, he's running. It's too late, Scotty.
That's okay.
So.
All solution.
Button open jams, right?
Yeah.
It's fold.
Folding on this, oh.
No, no, it's the small blind jamming.
See, good thing you guys checked up on me. He doesn't have an open jam range.
Oh, there you go.
I have to force it.
There we go.
It does in wizard though.
Yeah, but wizard is different.
Cause there's no such thing as GTO.
If you tell me it's a fold, I'm gonna tell you, you put something in wrong, cause I know this prints.
Well.
In my heart of hearts.
Yeah, well, you shouldn't be that confident.
It's three-handed. Ace nine.
It looks good, right? But it's, it feels like close to me. It's the floor.
One off the floor.
You don't, like, you don't get ten percent of aces.
I don't need ten percent. I just need five percent.
Yep, you got a little more than five percent. And this guy's wild. Like he's, obviously he wasn't even supposed to really jam here. So like.
I would think, that can't be right. I would think he has a lot of jams here.
He's jamming sixty-six percent. Is that not enough?
I forced it.
Ken said he didn't have any.
I had to change it to, I had to force him. He's supposed to three point five.
Okay.
No, that's after, oh, wait.
And then we jam. I had to force him to jam.
Huh. Alright, I guess he just puts enough pressure with the three and a half that he doesn't need to have jams.
But the ace nine's a good call.
Actually, I could make it. I should, I would actually prefer. Let's see a two point seven X, see what happens. It might mix jams and I, I don't think he has to go three point five at twenty effective, so. Let's make this like. I, I use two point seven. I don't know if three's better. Let's see if this changes anything. So now he has opens and jams. Oh, I, now I have to go back and fuck. So, so we have next, next. Two point seven, but this has to go back to forty. Nah, he doesn't wanna jam.
And he's got queen jack suited, right?
Yeah. So even with two point seven, he doesn't wanna have jams on top of that. Uh, two point seven.
So is he supposed to raise fold that? Or raise call that?
Most of, but he's really supposed to limp. Mostly. Uh, so he raises, you jam. And it calls.
Okay.
So it's going in in a different order.
Hmm.
Take a look, what's, what's, what's our jamming range there? Okay, so the pinks are all the jams.
Yeah.
There's.
Three bets.
A sex off suit.
Okay. Thanks.
Hmm. I would have jammed too much there for sure.
Broadways? Broadways?
Yeah, the, like, king queen suited, king jack suited. That, that might be the only ones, king queen off, I probably would have jammed.
I'm ripping all of these too.
Yeah, I don't know what I'd do with the baby ace there, I might find those calls. Maybe a little too wide on the suited branch with the, like, ace seven suited, I probably would just rip it.
Ooh, that's.
Spicy.
That's strong.
Oh, whoa, 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 pocket deuce. Never lose.
Yeah, he's got, he now has a ton of I C M pressure.
Oh, I'm lagged here. Alright, there we go. Yeah, th- this one, I. I don't know. I was very torn between checking and, um, ripping.
I'd have bet large.
It's about big, right?
Very big, cuz you got all card straight draws, flush draws.
He, he calls with a bunch of stuff, right, nine ten, king queen, blah, blah, blah. Gloves. Worst jacks.
So half is not enough, huh?
You got low straight draws and high straight draws, I departed it.
Feels like you could scam him for a few more big lines.
Yeah.
Are you overbetting there ever?
I don't know, what's the machine say? And chippy V?
I would not overbet, but I would bet. Fifty-five percent, bud?
I would go at least eighty-three would be my smallest bet size, I, I.
I know it's, I know it's like a big bet spot, but with Tucker, they're so short, I think my bets will get more, more accomplished for, than usual.
Without a club, I bet bigger than if I have a club. If I have a club, I use like eighty percent, without a club, I'll go like pot.
Between, it wants to bet between fifty-five and eighty percent, bud, and even over bet.
Yeah, I go eighty with my.
This is a blaster.
But given that Tucker is sitting there, I think the half, the like sixty percent is gonna get more represented.
That's about forty bet, okay, okay.
And then. Now I blasted, whoa.
Blasted turn and he shoves.
Call this man.
I snapped it.
Very, but like, yeah, this guy's out of line. Oh.
Oh, he's got it in so thin on this turn, wow. That's where you, you just gave it away.
And he found a way to get a third. This guy's tilted this morning. It's gotta be. He's like, this fucking drawing dead, he doubled through me eight times.
Imagine having a club for him in bed there, he blocks a lot of your bluffs.
What, what are you doing here, Danny?
Bro, I got a pair draw, can't fold to a min click, I can hit a jack.
Pair draw.
And I get the, I have the backdoor stuff, look at this, I turned the gutter and I'm gone. I was like, oh, that's the perfect turn card or not.
God.
Oh, blade.
I thought for sure he was folding turn, I was gonna be a genius. Alright, this is out of line or no?
Oh.
Slightly out of line, but you gotta block her, so.
Yeah. I thought he would overfold, I thought I could get him off better king X, oh, what?
You seven four that guy.
A seven four.
Two X everything, right?
No, I, I limped, there was the, uh, the jack five I limped, but seven four, it feels like too bad.
What is this?
Oh, what is this?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, so this I can explain, I can explain.
I love that, he makes it three.
I didn't mean to do it, I saw him thinking, 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 and a raise came in, and I just snap call, I snap clicked the far right button, thinking he had gone all in.
I wish he would have made it five, you six, sim seven.
Just one.
King nine off, gee.
I don't know what he was thinking here.
He had enough.
Yeah, he had enough. Alright.
I definitely did not mean to make it four.
Yeah, so, uh.
Worked out.
Worked out.
Over well, one thing you work on, big, big flop sizes. You wanna have a little bit more of that, also, one thing I know for sure, you can find, the low board, when you can flop a straight, when you're on the big blind, you can dunk.
Yep.
When the small card pairs, when you're on the big blind, you can dunk, so these are three spots you can easily find that you can improve.
I. Yeah, I, I'm doing that a lot, it's like, there were two spots and I didn't take either, so it looks like I'm not doing it, but I promise you, I am doing that quite a bit, I just happen to not do it in those two spots. At least two times, you know, it's like fifty fifty strategy, so.
They're not pure actions.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, alright, man, thanks a lot for sharing your hands. Congrats on the score, man, it's a nice one, uh, nice little honey pop.
Little two hundred sixty buy-ins.
Yeah, pretty good.
That's on the win.
Good. Thank you, thank you. Thanks for the review.
Well, it's a pleasure, so, alright, so you guys are in.